Alright, it is five thirty, so at this time we will call the Adrian City Commission Work Study Session. To order, roll call please.
Mayor He, President, Commissioner Hope.
President.
Commissioner Robert.
President.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Scher.
President.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gau. All Commissioners, all Commission Members present with the exception of Commissioner Gau.
Ready, ma'am?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead and take it away, sorry. Move it over to City. I was sleeping. Don't turn over there, you know.
Yeah, a lot of coverage tonight, in addition to what's on here, and also, hopefully have a moment to talk about scheduling of HRC events, which is a topic for the last couple of days. The first item is a church, a lot on Church Street that I was approached by Ben Nigra with interest in acquiring it. His father, Roland's house next door, I thought everyone's gonna hear about it.
He told me he was, I talked to him.
You want maybe pass on that for a minute then, until he?
That's fine, he said he was coming.
Yeah, well, it's, but it's the lot in the picture that I passed out. A half acre lot. I think what they've offered is seven hundred dollars. From the perspective of the lot we sold to Steve Rosales over there, which is larger, and it's improved the parking lot, it was twelve thousand dollars. But try to wait until that gets here, I don't want to talk about it anymore though. So number two is the timing of my evaluation, which you all know I communicated with you about, but my last contract tied that to salary scale and to my anniversary date, so my birthday, my official anniversary date now is July first. Because that I became administrator in July and that we set, well, actually the contract, we set it through July first. And that's what the language and contract was, so we really want to do it before then. You know, I think ideally we do it in June, just want to throw that out so we can get it scheduled, see if one of the meetings, pre meetings in June will work for everybody. Yeah?
Yeah.
Will we just do it in, in sequence of our, of our regular meeting, maybe at the end, or?
Like we did last time, that's how we did it last time.
Yeah.
I should look it back up and see how exactly did it. I was just doing that before I came here tonight, and I thought we did it at the end, and we did, because I looked that up and that is exactly how we did it.
Yeah, so I would say if we're gonna, yeah, you're right, it was technically a special meeting, I think, that we called at the end, right, in the executive session. So, you know, I would suggest that it works for everybody, the first meeting in June, because then if I'm successful in getting my step increase, we need to pass a resolution that that forgets, so I'm not going to be presumptuous, if we're doing it after the next meeting, we'll all have it up. We'll have it up at the chat up the next meeting and we'll be ready either way for July when the history of it comes on, does that work for everyone?
It works, and I, you know, Commissioner Gau did text me this morning and kind of wanted me to throw this out there. You know, it's kind of like, you know, he's supportive of having that, and, you know, whatever's on his side, but he wants to know what tool we're going to use. You know, so that's, you know, I told him that that should be a question to the mayor, that's, you know, and then we all could talk about it together, you know, eventually, we got months to do that, but he just wanted me to say it on the record that he wanted to know what, what tool we're going to use to.
I was very satisfied with the one you used last time.
No.
So, yeah.
It's not bad. I just looked it back in the other day.
It wasn't really that.
Well, a deck, like a talking point for all of us. That's why, that's why I meant.
Alright, so we're settled with the first meeting in June.
That's so, you know, I will not be. I'm okay with going forward.
I have one question, the second meeting in June, is that, that on the twentieth, the Tuesday? I have it on my calendar and I don't know if I?
The June team, because of June.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's Tuesday.
I didn't know if I was screwing up, okay.
What do you, what do you say?
Because of June, he didn't sign on Monday.
Yeah, I just realized that we're closed this Friday. That wasn't on my radar many games, had Friday night, so.
Nope.
Alright, well, perfect, move right along then, I'm having that on. Done the first meeting in June, strategic planning is our next topic. So I did reach out to a number of people, but you'll recall, you all discussed this at a pre meeting last year, and we were going to try to kick it off, and then kind of the whole river queue crisis ensued in the middle of the summer last year, and we got distracted from it, and that never happened, but summertime in my mind is kind of time to do it, long days and you know, and again for a couple of other days, so I reached out to a number of folks, including the guy who did it last time, his name is Bill Richards, and I got a response from him. Other section consultants I reached out to, didn't get a response from them. I put it up on the Michigan Municipal Executives List serve, I got the name of the guy named Lou Bender, who did get back to us, and Harry just happened to be in my office talking about Citizens Academy while it was time for me to call him, so we both called together, very impressive individual, I emailed, he turned a proposal right around too over the weekend, which I think you should have all gotten, I emailed it to you. There's more, more pages of examples of strategic plans he's done than there are pages of proposals. You know, three pages of references for other strategic plans that he's done, mostly municipal plans, really seem to have a real solid plan of action. I'm impressed by that, he did ask the question, you know, are you comfortable doing it in an election year, and, you know, what we told him was, well, you know, kind of the beauty of this year, it's almost always an election year, every other year is an election year, right, and what you have is not an election year, is you potentially have new commissioners who haven't really been on the commission long enough do a strategic plan, what we have right now is a group of very experienced commissioners, who've all been on the commission for a fair amount of time, that rookie here, but he's already bringing us paid credit for the cookies, so he's fit right there. So I, I mean, I didn't think, and after we talked to him, I think you'd agree, Mary, you didn't think that was an issue after we explained the, you know, makeup of this commission, it's not showing the fact that we're really trying to implement it. The other person I talked to was Bill Canyon, when America and I met last week, he came up with that name, and Bill came in to see me today and asked me some questions, he would be interested as well. I would say not nearly the depth of experience in this particular municipal strategic planning, although it is what he does, and one is is that kind of facilitation, and he's done some notable ones, including one for the church, one for the Catholic Church of the merge here in town. Either that, which was the conjunction one, so, awesome, good experience as well, first of all, but I I think you're going to have two good options to choose from, I put it on the agenda just to check in about it, make sure we're still all on board for doing that, and hopefully, as with the evaluation, set some target dates for doing it. If Lou were going to do it, he can't do it until at least July. That would probably be the earliest we would want to look at, for that, for discussion.
I did read through some of those proposals, and I have family in Fenton, so I emailed their mayor, it was listed, and he said that they had a great experience with them. So, I was pretty impressed with what he had written.
Well, I luckily was in, as Greg said, in talking about Citizens Academy and working on website stuff like that, so I don't know if he was interviewing us, or we were interviewing him, I think there was a little bit of back and forth, he was making sure that, that we knew what strategic planning was about, and what we wanted out of it, which I really appreciated. I really, really liked him, I liked Bill Canyon too though, but I don't know all of his strategic planning background, you know, him as a leader, obviously. So, but I don't know if you have a chance to review his website, but I actually downloaded some of the articles he wrote for the review from his website and sent them to some of my coworkers, is really good supervisory leadership professional development things too, so if you get a chance, take a look at his writings, very impressive, very impressive. And he was just able to, like, rattle off, this is what we'll do Friday night, this is what we'll do Saturday, this is the next step, in seven months we're going to do this, and in eleven months we're going to do that. I mean, he had it, he had it all, yeah, we didn't even have to really ask a whole lot of questions. It was, this is what we're going to do. Okay, I liked it. And the one thing I really liked about what he said was that, once a month, so every month, we had to have a part of the strategic plan on our agenda to discuss at a pre meeting, so it's not something you just set on a shelf. So his goal for us, I guess, would be that we discuss the strategic plan every single month.
I think that was the goal we discussed, and we discussed it last year, was that we don't just put it, it's something that we don't want to put on a shelf, it's a proactive plan for us to keep moving on.
You know, you know, it's a good point about the shelf statement, but, you know, Larry and I are the only ones that have, you know, been through this process, and, and and I've had people tell me that have been digging into this a little bit, about the strategic plan, about how the last one we did was terrible, and this and that. And my argument to that is, is if you look back on it, and, and Larry can remember this too, that we made a point to not put on the shelf, and some of the things that we've accomplished in, in, in our old plan was, the ambulance service was on that strategic plan, the, the new revenue streams was on that strategic plan, that was before the marijuana industry came legal, and the excise tax funds were coming in, that was, I believe, before the oil trust was even a charter amendment to get on the ballot for the voters to vote for that, so that was another thing we did, and, and communication, because communication at the time was not the best, and, you know, I think Larry and I can both agree with that. That was one of the things we wanted to improve as a body, so strategic plans are, you know, again, we didn't have the money we have now, back then, and we were just trying, that's why the new revenue stream is one of the things we had to try to, you know, collectively figure out, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's good for the city, it's good for the administrator, it's good for the city commissioners to have priorities set, goals to attain, and then attack those goals, so, and then, you know, with community input, and the elected body input, and then we give, we adopt the document, and then Greg, let's go get it done, you know, you know, with our support, that's what they're meant for, and that's how you really start seeing progress, when you put in the priorities of the community on paper, put it down on paper, and then, and then go attack it, so, I was really impressed with the amount of cities that that gentleman has been a part of, and, and it's like, that's a vast array of different populations and whatnot, so, I, I know, I, I like Bill too, but, but I like experience when it comes to that, especially municipalities, and how you achieve that, how you achieve those goals, so I, I really was impressed with what you sent us on Friday, and, again, that'd be my support is, is to go with the gentleman that has the vast experience, but I'm excited about getting the opportunity to get community input, and also put some things on paper and goals, and we'll get them.
One of the things that Bill brought up today, I think is a good idea, is in advance of your session, doing a community survey, you know, he talked about different means of public engagement, by, by, by our poorly attended open houses, we've had the master plan and the arts correct master plan, however, we get tremendous response to our community surveys, each of those got over, well, over five hundred responses, and trash surveys, more of that. So I want to think about putting that out ahead of time, carefully worded, kind of give yourselves some guidance about what the community is finding to be the issues to be addressed. Well, it could jump it off more.
Yeah, that was part of his requirement, wasn't it, was to make me know when you'd be back.
Yeah, I think we brought that up as well.
Yeah, I, I feel the one with the most municipality experience, obviously, I feel, is, is the one, I know, we were both a little bit panicked the other day, because we wasn't hearing back from anybody, and, and, and we just weren't hearing back, so that's when we were like, okay, who else has planning experience, and that's, you know, and I think Bill is amazing and a great leader and, and very wise, but I feel that we go with, where we go with that municipality experience, with the strategic planning, I think that's what we need.
You said his schedule wasn't open till July?
July.
Can't beat experience, I know that, for years we've gone with it. In other areas that I've worked with, we've always looked at people first, they know the community, and they know us, they know, sometimes that can be a deterrent, a drawback. There's nothing that matches experience, and the diverse experience that that gentleman has, no comparison.
Well, we're a diverse community, and getting a survey to get what, because the public's ultimately the bosses, we really like the body, but they're going to give us direction on what they feel, and then we kind of brainstorm together and put them, you know, one through five, one through ten, and we made a point on it from this level, we made a point of, Larry, let's get some attainable goals, let's not say that we want to eliminate the pension deficit tomorrow, that's not feasible, right, we, we did the correct actions, that was other thing in strategic planning was to find out how to get the pension liability up, and we've done that, turn everybody into a DB, do a DC, lump sum payments, and so on, so it's, it's, but to get in, get community input, brainstorm with city staff, and you're like the body, and then set goals.
I think it goes to make sure a lot of get that community input, a survey out, and then maybe input in, anyway, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll want to leave it open.
Peaceful time, woman.
But it's important to make a decision so that we do get on his schedule, I'm very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're ready to do that, I'll, I'll get back to him.
Let me say one thing.
Okay.
And that is, I've, I've gone through two of these strategic plans, okay? I like the idea of getting community input, extremely important, but both times we went through the strategic planning when it was all said and done, we didn't do anything that we couldn't have done ourselves on this table, if we had said, we're sitting, setting these number of hours aside, and this is what we're doing, and have the same plan, we're, you know, we're going to take this amount of time, we're going to do this, you know, and then we're going to follow through on it. I know both times that Alan and I have taken part in this, it's been about a twenty hour process, and when I walked away from it, I'm like, you know, I, I just, I have been impressed, I mean, it sounds great, you know, but I just have been impressed. Now, if everybody is in favor of this one gentleman, I'm on board, but I'm just saying I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this is the route you have to go, and I know that there are people in the community who think this is really important, but I'm just saying, after walking away from two of these experiences, I haven't felt like the city was any better off. But I'm willing to go along with what everybody wants to do.
I, I think I need, I get your point, is that you're saying that, you know, getting community input's important, it's the most important, but do we have to sit there for twenty hours? Because it literally, it was like twenty, it was like, it was two long days, right? Or could we break it down into a three hour session, and would be like the body, after getting community input, and just get it on paper, and say, let's go? Is that what you're trying?
I mean, the, the community is going to tell you what's important.
Sure.
And then, we work with that, and we, we know the community, and we address priorities, and and set those priorities, like the idea of, once a month, you review something, you know, as part of what we've talked about, but I just think it has to be said, that if everybody else wants to go the other direction, that's fine, I don't have any problem with it. Maybe he is fabulous at what he does, and maybe the other two people who facilitated before, weren't, I don't know. I'm just saying, it wasn't a good experience for me.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a huge number. About six thousand. Peanuts, but it's not a huge number for us, and, you know, to be directed in your activity, and, you know, able to do it efficiently is, was something.
My understanding of what, of the process was Friday night, we'd meet for three hours, and he would want us to come up with, if we were going to give a tour to someone new to Adrian, what would we be telling them in three to five years? And then, only have three doable goals, maybe five. So three hours on a Friday night, and then Saturday, during the day, the department heads come in and talk about how we can accomplish those three to five goals. I, I hear what you're saying, if we, if we are able to work together in a way and understand this strategic planning process, do we really need a facility?
And I'm not trying to throw wrench in anything, I just had to say what I had to say, because I've been there two times before, and we did have department heads involved in the past too. And we had, at least in the first one we did, we had community members at the meetings too, that also took part in the breakout session.
Are you looking for clear direction here?
I mean, I was just looking for dates, but you all seemed, almost all seemed ready to, to give me ultimate direction, and so, well, like Commissioner Miller says, hoping to have it in July, we probably don't like those dates, so, other way there, what can be discussed along? Maybe not so much, but I am sort of like going to do that, so.
I, I have to agree with the mechanic, you threw the wrench, I think it's, sometimes, when you look around the room, and you listen to the city, listen to the people that live here, that's a lot of input, a lot of intelligent people involved, but sometimes it's just best, and it takes the weight off our shoulders, if we have somebody that drives a bus. Someone who's just taking notes when no one else is, they're keeping us on track when no one else is, not that we couldn't do it, I believe we could, but being my first, being my first time, I would, would pick up the wrench, give it back to Larry, and and go on with the, the bus driver, so I think it's my thoughts.
And we, bus driver on July, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get something, so.
But I do hear your point though, I remember, I don't, I don't know if it was just the gentleman that did it, or what, because it was very, very, there's a lot of wasted time, it's two different people.
I thought of a girl, the first time, and this guy, Bill Richards, they're both came from E and U.
Yes.
Both E and U professors.
I did two clear on the same time, so. Here's the goal.
I would prefer later than July, if possible, just before looking at dates. With the last two candidates coming, if possible.
Thoughts on this? I don't want to scare you stuff that far out, so I'm good.
We've got weddings.
I might be, you're in the twenty eight.
I can do others.
I like the stipulation, it's.
Okay, see what's available.
Alright, stay on the track around here, let's see. We have Scott here from River View, so, I just wanted to, I mean, we have talked about this before, Scott presented online before, but I have the pilot ordinance amendment, the River View here is on the agenda for first reading tonight. I wanted to tell you that, per our discussion last time, I looked at the combination of revenue that that and the pilot would throw off, together with the service agreement that's been proposed, or that would keep us essentially revenue neutral in terms of what the current minimum payment for that pilot is, or it's escalated to something like a hundred thousand a year as a minimum payment, right now, so are, looking at our piece of that, that's right in the twenty five thousand dollar range, and so the combination of the two gets us, gets us, I'm sorry, that's too low, but it is right in the range of what the service agreement plus the mileage would raise, so mileage money on the invented pilot would be about eighteen, and the service agreement, I think, was twenty seven.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's right about where we are right now with the, with the minimum payment that can come in under the current pilot ordinance, so. It does achieve revenue neutrality as far as the city is concerned. You know, this is just first reading tonight, and I don't have the service agreement on the agenda, and I thought would, if you're okay with that, with second reading, but I move this along for purposes of encouraging Mishda to adhere to their funding. Not, not saying, do you want to give us a little bit of an update, Scott, on where that's all going, and how we spent some of that?
Yeah, so, as everybody knows, we were waiting, basically, we're waiting for the plan to come through, well, documents to come through, through the Michigan League Hall, so we don't even, what they look like, they, they've committed to us that the funding is coming. The bank is out there. And we're still struggling, obviously, to build. So, but once that comes in, then we're going to sign contracts with Wolverine Construction, to start the fix on the building, and we anticipated anywhere between ten, twelve months. Part of that grant money is to keep the building operational through that ten to twelve months, between soil, water bill, food bills, things like that to pay. But I appreciate, you know, Mishda just wants to see that everybody comes to the table. If it all, I guess, back. Anything else to question?
Well, any, any questions on either the ordinance or the service agreement, or what Scott told you? It's like, we've got first reading on that, just on the pilot, and do that next time, for service, you know, the second reading, everybody's aboard with that.
I guess I, I do have a question about your timeline, so when you say ten to twelve months, you intend the twelve months from today? If we agree to this?
No.
Or a pentacle months from when you start?
When they start construction.
Construction, yes, you're calling.
Yeah, we don't want to sign contracts with Wolverine in twelve months. And Wolverine doesn't want to order this stuff. So it's kind of a trickle down effect, but, but everybody's pushing as much as possible, it's hung up in Michigan legal department with actual agreement, so to speak. We do know that the agreement, some parts of it, what will affect us on the catch, by moving forward, it was hard, but, I don't from the construction aspect, that really matters, we did want to build effects, so.
Another questions from Scott or me? Okay, none. Next, we have Farmers Bar Electric Hall. Again, we've got this on the agenda tonight, and we've talked about it before, on the agenda, because the amount of the On the agenda because the amount of, uh, contract that we're, uh, proposing to let is about ten thousand. As far as the pricing, uh, we're proposing to use, uh, Adrian Electrical Group, who, who is our pre-bid, uh, contractor for electrical services. And they were awarded annual bid for that already, so they're giving us that pricing and so that contract, but because the amount exceeds ten thousand, you need to have it on the agenda. I think everybody's aware of the work that we're proposing to do there. This was in conjunction with the work we already did in putting restrooms in there. This is additional power to allow food trucks to operate without, uh, needing generators. Uh, Jay's here and Matt's online. Uh, Jay, can you just, uh, elaborate a little bit more on that?
So what I'm, excuse me, what I'm doing on the west side of the, of the lot, so nearest to American Title. We'll put four bollards in and we'll have power on it for food trucks, separate space equally along that area. Uh, fifty amp service there. They'll also have, um, power in there for, uh, for, for utility plug, regular plug if you need it. They'll also run conduit for future, uh, usage or charging stations. So if we need to add more hours charging stations, uh, for cars, the, the conduit will already be ran there at the, at the time. It'll make it much easier to do it. The service panel they'll put in will accommodate that future power if we need it as well.
Matt, anything you want to add, uh, to what Jay said?
No, I think, I think Jay got it all. Thank you, Jay.
You said charging for cars also?
Yep, so it'll be, the conduit, the conduit will be there and available. And we're through the DDA talking with the local, uh, car, car dealership and we might be able to get the charging unit for free put in there. So we'll see how that, how that conversation continues to go, but we're looking at those opportunities.
Great. Where would you see those located?
They'd be on the west side of the parking lot there. Yep, right along the same space.
So we chose to orient everything over to the west side to keep open our options as it relates to the interface between whatever happens with Armory Development, Armory's market properties. This is all the way on the west, shouldn't, shouldn't affect the plan for that.
So if they put the charging stations in there, I know we've talked about that, um, so if somebody was charging, that food truck might not necessarily fall up into there because somebody can be charging?
Well, there'll be four, there'll be four equally spaced areas to put it. And so if there's an event going on, the parking lot will be closed.
That's right.
Any questions, Phil? Farmers Market Power. We'll say that resolution was on your.
What's the schedule, Dave?
We approve this tonight. Um, I believe the lead time is six to eight weeks, Matt would have to clarify, but I think that's what we're waiting, six to eight weeks on the, the actual control panel, so. But they will schedule and get it as soon as they can. Hopefully it'll be summertime.
I believe the panel was nine weeks out and, uh, they could, they were gonna start all the other work ahead of time, so as soon as the panel got here, they could just hook everything up and be done.
Perfect. Thanks, Matt. All right, well.
I never, I don't know.
So I'll see then, um.
I guess we should pop that.
We can still talk about it or we can wait a little bit more and talk about what I wanted to talk about as the leads to, uh, uh, our HRC events. Uh, Mayor, do you have preference which way we?
Let's, let's do that and wait in case that does come.
Right. So, we, as the mayor knows, have been innovated, uh, this weekend, I will say, Friday and today and so on, with requests to schedule events that the HRC is envisioning. As envisioned, um, it's a lot. There's four within the span of a month. When the dates were originally proposed, they conflicted with other city events. One was on the same night as the planning commission meeting. You know, as you know, we've had a policy of wanting our city events to be, uh, on Zoom. Problem when there's two meetings at the same time. Since moved off of that date, I believe, but there's still four of them and still all, uh, uh, if, if we're going, they're all wanting to be, as I understand it, HRC events, opposed to things that they are in support of that are other uh, organizations' events. You know, it, it becomes burdensome to staff and our resources if we're doing this you know, so many times, so often and, you know, and we can, there really needs to be more advanced planning if we're going to have them in city chambers on Zoom and have a staff person available after hours to run Zoom. Who it is for those events. And I wanted to talk to you about this and, and, yeah, make sure the commission is on board with what our policy guidance have been, that we expect these months to be in chambers and to be on Zoom if there's city events. Kind of. I, I also think it would be an opportunity to have a broader discussion of just the direction of the HRC. I passed out their ordinance for you all. Um, and I've talked about this in the past. It really doesn't provide much guidance for what they do on a monthly basis, um. I don't go to all the meetings, the mayor does, but it, it seems like they're almost struggling to find things to do as opposed to having, you know, the planning condition by, uh, contrast. They don't have anything on their agenda as a business item, then they don't meet. Uh, and, uh, that doesn't seem to be what's happening. In fact, what seems to be happening is the interest of some of the members are causing them to to expand the number of meetings that they're planning to have. What the ordinance envisioned, which was at least once a quarter to multiple, as I said multiple times, that would be five meetings in a month. They would be holding, uh, we would be hosting in one fashion or other. They're all, in fact, uh, city events. I just want to throw that out there because I, I, I think it's, like I say, it's a little bit uh, uh, much in terms of the demands on, on staff and, uh, facilities. But also, uh, you know, unclear that it's clearly directed. And the, the interest is out there, uh, wanting to be a face of the community and having these events and yet the commission may or may not know, mayors at their meetings, but the rest of you may or may not know what those events are and may or may not support having the events. And so I, I wanted to have that discussion with you tonight because it kind of came to a head today with all the, the four events that were requested, uh, today, all within this kind of span of the next month. There is, or anything else you want to share from the meeting, uh, last time or various discussions you've had around this topic?
No, I mean, we just, um, the Human Relations Commission is really, um, working right now to really working together and they're really working together to come to a, um, like, you know, one of the things that they're tasked with is, you know, educate, education. And so they're, you know, looking at, at that education piece and, um, part of what, you know, happened this time is that a couple of people, you know, want, found something, not knowing somebody else did something is what I think happened. And, and there was like a town hall that was already being set up. There's something that has always been done within HRC, um, and it just, it fell at the exact same time as something else was being planned because everybody's really trying to get that education piece and that, what can we do in the community? And, you know, what, what can we do out there? And it, it just, it, that just all fell without the communication to the city on the city chambers and, you know, can we do these events and can this happen? And, um, and so that, there was just that communication piece that was amiss, but they are really, I, I will say this is honestly, probably the most focused I've seen the HRC since I've been a part of it, to be really perfectly honest with you, of trying to really find, carry out what is exactly put in there for their, their purpose and their mission. And they're really, um, they did team building this last meeting. And I think it was, uh, really good. There was a lot, we have a new member that already had a really great idea. It was just, it is, it's that excitement, I think, it's, it's, it gets excited and then it's trying to set things up really fast. And so it was a little bit overwhelming to the city. I know today a few people were getting, uh, phone calls from different people all over the place instead of from just one person. Um, and that's even outside of these four events in the span of a month. This is something different that, that they're looking at doing, um, instead of it being like one central, um, it's, it's that excitement and that movement, but it's not coming from like one central person. And so everybody thinks somebody else is not doing it. And so everybody's getting involved. Does that make sense?
Can we go back a little bit, some history here and that? When Commissioner Hell, I came on the commission almost eight years ago, there wasn't an HRC. There had been one in the past, quite a, quite a bit in the past. And it was Mayor Jacobson who wanted to bring this back and brought it to us. Now, correct me. I think I remember him saying something that this was a group that may meet quarterly, but if they had special events or if they had the need, they could meet more often. It was something that Mayor Jacobson was very passionate about. But the rest of the people on the commission really didn't know much about what was, was going on with the, with the HRC in the past. And, uh, everybody voted for it. I don't think anybody was against it, uh, but the commission has never really been a big part of the HRC, other than the mayor going to a number of the meetings. If, now, but that sort of brings us to date. I mean, if if, uh, uh, the planning commission all of a sudden dropped four things in our lap and said, we want to do this. You know, what are we going to do? I mean, the planning commission has been around for a long time. They realize that they need to work within our boundaries, like Greg says, or staffing and that and that type of thing. So I, I guess, you know, coming from my perspective, um, let's work with the HRC, but at the same time, the HRC needs to work with, with this body and the department heads as well. So that they can fit their events in, um, and, I mean, in reality, I may look like an idiot here. I've done that before, but when you say, really, when you say education, I don't even know what you're talking about. Educating, uh, what? And then what are these four special events?
It can be like anything from, so to answer that, it can be, um, you know, Commissioner Roberts, that was that one, um, you know, human trafficking that human trafficking month was in January, so they did, um, they hosted, uh, a town hall for that. Um, home ownership seminar to show people how they can own homes when they think maybe they can't. It's something they've done every year. Um, they've done bridging the divide in the past, especially that was very important back when, um, there was a lot of tension within the community and police back several years ago, like right after the and pandemic had started, um, and, uh, so those are like, just to give you an example, like those are like the town hall that they do. Um, you know, they don't always do the same ones, but like they do, but like they try to do one every quarter.
Good, legitimate.
Mm-hmm, and those are education for the, the community, right?
I get it, I get it.
The human trafficking one was very well attended, actually. It was about like a city commission would be attended, at least out there. Because they, we held it out there. It just depends on what it is and what, you know, some of them are as attended. The bridging the divide ended up being on Zoom because we still weren't in person and that was two screens worth when you went across on the gallery. It just depends on what it is about, um. I knew that there was a group that, um, that I knew about, that we invited to join us via Zoom and it was about homelessness, um, and that one was very well attended. It was all on Zoom, um, but we, you know, will have a few people on Zoom. Typically they do come for the most part, um, but those are back in the days where there were no in-person meetings. So those were all, everybody was on Zoom, including us.
Well, this is a great facility for doing those kind of programs. But if we have a staffing issue or there's something else already planned, uh, maybe the HRC can look at someplace like the district library or.
Well, something we've tried to avoid is, so we paid a lot of money for this system so that people can hear it pretty well when we're having a meeting in here and other facilities don't necessarily have that same setup. So we've, we've, like, we've brought the DDA back in-house. We've tried to, we've brought the historic district back in-house. We've tried to bring all our boards and commissions in here to have their meetings so that folks can participate via Zoom. We made a commitment to that, to have interactive Zoom for all of our public meetings as a way to enhance public participation. And, you know, if, if they're not here, then we can't take care of that. Likewise, you know, all of these are open meetings. If there's a quorum of these bodies and they're talking about their business, the, the, is their charge, that's an open meeting and we have to post that. We have to know where it's going to be and how it's going to be held. So when, for example, we posted to say it's going to be on Zoom and the Zoom count is not available, that meeting has to be canceled. Public notice that it would be available on, so it'll maybe that would require it.
If you're doing a program saying homeless, is that an official meeting and do you have to worry about it? Having a quorum? I mean, it's like, it's a presentation.
Well, if it's strictly a presentation and not a discussion of the, of her members in the HRC, even as soon as you have a quorum, try to correct me if I'm wrong, but as soon as you have a quorum of your membership there and they start talking about anything that is their business, and their business, by the way, is, Scott, is education, you're right, like, uh, then, you know, I think that really ought to be held as an open meeting.
And, and to use this as an example on that is, I mean, even when there's four of us, you know, out anywhere or at somebody else's meeting and it's happened where it's been questioned, we all sit away from each other so that, you know, because four of us end up showing up at somebody else's meeting, um, not a city commission meeting, maybe not even a city meeting, but because that quorum is there, um, because it could lead into us discussing city business, and now that's a problem.
You use the county for example.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
You were sitting in the middle?
Yep.
County was sitting behind us, Gordon was sitting behind me, or spread apart?
And that's the one I'm talking about, because we were.
Yeah, we had somebody.
Still about.
Yeah, boy, uh, speaking, uh, you know, with the, with the angle that it was, uh, an open. So we were sitting literally over ten feet apart, all of us.
Very far away.
And the four of us still got boyed by a county official, still.
Because there, because we were there and so see, that's the same, that's just, i- i- every, and everybody's watching that now, so we just have to be really.
I, I just, I did it. I just was questioning it because I didn't know if it was being considered an official meeting, other than a program that HRC was putting out.
Oh, I, I wanted to, like, I think that's, I mean, open meetings act is a valid conversation to have, but I think I, I would like to talk more about the ordinance a little bit and some of the things that concern me or ways that we could provide a little more guidance, maybe. So when you ask about education, so C four says that formulate and carry out programs of community education and information. Uh, with the object of discouraging and eliminating any such tensions, prejudice or discrimination. Underneath that, number eight, it says cooperate with other public government or private agencies in developing courses of instruction for presentation in public and or private schools, public libraries or any other suitable place, showing the, illustrating the contributions of various. I mean, it's pretty long, I'm not going to read it all. Okay, so I think that, um, we just talked about a strategic plan for the city, that the HRC should be creating a strategic plan for the year, especially when they're considering their budget, because creating all these events creates, um, funding, needed funding, which I, I do think is valid to have that conversation, but I think it needs to be in our budget and it needs to be in kind of our budget requests and, and thought considerations, right? This was a strategic plan, so maybe, um, was the other, oh, we were just talking about?
No.
No, well, Bill could do. Bill could do help with some strategic planning for the city, the, the, the commission. Um. And, and then they can budget how they're going to do that throughout the year. Does that, and then we don't have, like, we're going to do seven things right now. We're going to, this is our year and this is our plan and, and seeking community guidance, just like we discussed. There's, we can throw out a survey about what does the, what are some tensions that we see in our community right now? Um, and how are we going to educate? What agencies do we have in our community right now? They can help us with those. So Lynn Punnet's sitting right behind you and she's a huge housing, I'm going to say fanatic. Because she is. So she knows a lot. She's read a lot. She's very educated. She could have done a housing program for you, um. Joaquin knows a lot about housing, so. There, there's, there's agencies and organizations that we should partner with. To do a lot of this education and, and outreach that. I mean, they're, they're experts in this in our own community. And a survey can tell us what our. Um, constituents want to hear and see and what tensions they're feeling and how can we make change? And that's where, where that. Guidance should come from. And I think planning long term is, is our best option. Um, for that.
I, I think, you know, and, and I was going to make some comments and commissioner comments about, because I was on vacation. I had a lot of time. To spend. So I, I listened to the whole H R C meeting and. I'll hear the mayor, that pre-meeting was, was the best meeting that they've had since I've been watching them. Very informative. I understand why each member joined the H R C. What they're, what they, what they want to try to accomplish. Um, very, 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 uh, educational for me about the members. I know most of them, but some of them are like, why, why do you want to be on that board? Um, I think that like with the city commission is that. All communication regards to city staff should run through the chair. It's like there should be all angles coming. I don't direct. Matt Tomaszewski on D P W stuff. I talk to the city administrator. Whenever I email Greg. It's always, if I have an issue with, uh, code enforcement, I email Greg, C C the department head. That he's in the loop, the department head knows, I know that I'm in the loop. And then, and then, and then we can get down to business. But when you have all, all angles coming. The city staff, it's overwhelming, you know, you know, I did watch it, you know, and honestly, me before I knew that. You know, there was so much activity going on, I thought, oh, they're, now they're starting to get ready to accomplish some things. I think it'd be great for the community. Community picnic, that's a great idea, right? But the communication needs to funnel through the chair. I mean, uh, it's, it's. We don't, we're not allowed or we don't, that's, I mean, some do, but we, the ones that are experienced enough know that we don't direct city staff. That's his job, right? We deal with Greg Elliott and John Gluley and the city clerk. That's it. If I want to inquire about something, I have the right to. But I would go through him, right? And so when you have all different members, you know. You know, communicating with department heads already about. Events, that's, that becomes problematic, you know, long term. So. I think again, it's the communication piece, communication with anything is, is the key. But everything should be funneled through the chair. Like, I mean, that's, she should be, she's the chair for a reason. Her communication, you know, the mayor doesn't want, she had enough stuff going on. Now that's why I'm sure she has no interest in being the chair, probably wrong, but. You know, but that's why her job is different than our job. She has more to do. She's expected to be at certain places that we're not, right? So. Communication is the key and, and, and you can't have all, I think there are seven members, six members, just. Blown up city staffs, emails and telephones, you know, with direction. You know, because that, that's when it gets overwhelming.
And, and I think that's the frustration, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that you are expressing tonight, um, from our conversation today. Um, is just, is that, a, a lot of it is that and just that. You know, maybe not checking to see, you know, and, and I. And I will admit to all of you here, I've already admitted it to the H R C. I was like, oh, this will really help out the staff if we don't. These are educational things. We don't have to be. My brain wasn't thinking that we were already going to have Zoom options. We already talked about it. It was going to be offsite. My brain went to, that's fine. Well, because it's on city Zoom and it, it would have still been publicized, but because. It wasn't going to be through the city Zoom. I just wasn't thinking about that. I was trying to save the city staff and I. And, you know, I didn't think about it in the moment of the meeting because I was like. Hey, we've got momentum. People are wanting to. You know, to have these events that the homeownership one that is coming up in May. Was supposed to, you know, we were hoping to already have it happen and there were some. You know, I, I. All of our. Tees crossed and our, our eyes got in and I just didn't think about it, um, when it came to that. So. Um, but it still is. That I, I really feel to echo like what Commissioner Hell is saying, it's. Instead of just going through one. Communication, that chair, just like, um. You know, if it was planning commission conference, you know, you know, coming from the chair or Z B A coming from the chair, you know, that communication. I think it needs to be that because they think it was overwhelming in the last couple of days of. Bam, 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 coming from different people and, and. Did the same, about the same things. So it wasn't even, there just wasn't that communication that was happening and that was part of the problem.
But there's no strategy, right? There's no strategic plan. There's no plan in place long term. And no budget to plan those things. So there's no strategy. It's like. Let's brainstorm at a meeting and, and have five things. And do it, right? So there's no strategy or strategic plan. If, if there's things that want to be accomplished, just like, I mean, we. We can't do something in one meeting and bust it all out in two weeks or three weeks or four weeks. We, we make a plan and there's a strategy to that plan and that's how we operate. Right? So it can't be just willy nilly and all over the place and let's do these six things with. Why do you want to have a community picnic? Is there a purpose? Is there a reason? What are we going to do? Can we just say we're going to bring outside resources to a community picnic? We have second Fridays. That's a community picnic already in place. Why don't we have a stronger promotion of second Fridays? There's, there's a lot of resources and organizations in this community. Our former friendly commissioner, Mr. Watson. Was like. We're the best at making new nonprofits. We're the best at making something up, but it's, it's already here. Let's strengthen what we have. And build and create strategies to build those already existing things. And the H R C is in a great position to help empower each and every one of those organizations already here.
The other thing that I think hasn't happened besides speaking with one voice is. Doing. The, asking the questions ahead of time. Right? You know, and as I understand, some of us. Got added to the agenda at the meeting at the H R C. Now, that's not the way it should be done. Right? Come, clear the dates. Check, uh, and make sure the facilities are available. Then propose, you know, or if you're at, even more strongly, if you're asking for a staff person to be there, as sometimes happens with our department ads. Make sure that they're on board. And I, honestly, if you're asking for one of the staff people to be there, you got to communicate with me. Never had such a communication in my life. And. Then go put it on the agenda and talk about it. I, I would even suggest and go to the commission, but. With these public facing events, you may want them to come and pitch them to you before they're. Uh, out there in the community having the events. You know, ask, discuss it with the commission first at a pre-meeting. If you've got an event that you want to hold. You know, as, as the discussion has shown tonight, uh, you all may have some good ideas about how to do it. Better. But that communication is not happening ahead of, ahead of time, which is one should happen. Before something's up on Facebook and scheduled and. It conflicts with other things and other priorities that the city has.
I would, I would agree with that because I, I apparently am out of the loop. I, I don't know what's happening. Um, I believe I did get an email about a book club. I guess I didn't realize that that was coming through the H R C. Um, so. My perspective, my point of view would be similar to what you just said, Greg, is that. You know, once a quarter, they come to us. Mrs. Bernard here comes to us and says, here's what we'd like to accomplish in the next three months, the next six months. Here's some of our ideas. Um, is the commission on board with these things? And then work with the H R C and the mayor to. Determine dates and then work through. What's that? No, I just think that there's a. Proper. Procedure to do this and, and I, I, the citizens academy to me is a perfect example. That's my idea. It's something I've heard from residents. There's not enough communication. We don't know what's happening. We don't know how to do things. So I went out on my own, researched, I did my own communication with other cities. Brought that information to you in a pre-meeting before anything was ever decided. It wasn't on an agenda other than a pre-meeting. And if you guys had come and said, or if the community that night had said. Nah, we don't really want to do it. Guess what? That's fine. It goes in the garbage or it goes in, you know, a year or two or whatever from now. That's okay. But I didn't make any plans until I knew I had the buy-in from you and the buy-in from city staff, which was you. So to me, that's how projects should be. Accomplished. There should be a plan. It should be long-term unless there's some incredible need. That. Something. Hopefully not tragic happens and we have to do something very quickly, but even our, even our parades and different things. We asked for thirty days notice to get staff. What's the difference? We, we should ask that of our own commissions, our own people, at least give us thirty days. To make sure we are all on board and have the staffing and the ability and we can promote it correctly, all of that stuff.
I think the key is, sorry. I think the key is that we're not. They don't bring forth an, an idea. They bring forth many ideas, short-term, long-term. This is what we're looking at for the next six, nine months or longer. Uh, I think that's, that's a great approach. Because we can't be too far ahead of ourselves and, uh, tend to chase their tail when they're. Last minute. And I think that's very, very true. Bring forth. These are the projects we're looking at.
I think that, and, and. No, I don't mean to speak out of turn when I keep saying strategic, but, um, I. I, I do believe that there has to be consent, some consensus on. That commission. I believe that they need to have, um. Guidance on what this community needs. We can't just say, oh. We're going to do this because this is what we do. Oh, we're going to do this. This is because I think that, you know, if we have good, um, out or in, input from surveys. Then they need to put a survey out. What does this community want to see happen? Okay. Well, these are the organizations in our community that are, are, that's, they're in their wheelhouse. Let's bring them together and create a program for that. That's a strategic plan, not, we're going to do this because it's just what we do. And let's do four of them at once. So I, I, I think there's a lot of potential and there's a lot of great things that can come from this. I think we need to take a step way back and start over. But I, I, one more thing that worries me about this is the word investigative that's inherent to it. I'm really concerned about that word and. Investigation is not. A word I like in human relations commission. Make a thoughtful resort of practice. I like that, those words. I don't like the word investigation. In, um, human relations commission, but. That's another problem I had if. We're going to have this conversation.
So what are you suggesting? I mean, I'm reading over the ordinance. I, I planned, so I have read before, but to kind of reflect, remember, what do you? What are you suggesting? We. Rewrite the ordinance? Give them clear direction on what, what. Their mission is or what their mission should be or, because I know that I've listened to some meetings and, you know, there's a member of the past said that. You know. They ran the humanization commission in the eighties and like, it's not the same now. We did a lot more things back then that we do now, but. I asked Chuck or Mayor Jacobson this, uh, because I, I tasked him. Before you and I got involved, I tasked him, I go, listen, you know, you brought the board back and then I supported that. But right now we need some direction, right? You know, and, and we don't have time. We have, we have this board, right? And we have our own personal lives. I tasked him, you need to help that board get organized and get strategic. So they can accomplish these things. And, and, and. He goes, I will. I come back two days later and he goes, I can't really think of what they could be doing right now. I go, it goes, because. When we passed the anti-discrimination ordinance to the city, Andrew Munson bought that, right? When it comes to discrimination against, you know, renting the, you know, minority groups, L G B T Q I, all that, you know, that was adopted unanimously. So I don't. I don't, and Chuck's like, you know, when we, you know, when you guys did that, I don't know what else they could be working on. I go, well. I understand that, but that was at the time that board needed some clear leadership when it comes to where they were going, you know, so, um. I don't like to meet just to meet. I like to meet and get business done, get, do the city's business and go home. You know, right? And so. Greg's point is, you know, like, back, back, going back to all the communication issues. I mean. I don't know how many times Nancy Weatherby's contacted you about something, but I'm going to guess none maybe. Right? So that's my point is that other boards don't. Right, yes, she's a planner. I mean, other board members don't inundate. City staff with, with time and resources. So I believe that it all should be funneling through the chair. Of that board, you know, and that, and the chair should be the only one communicating with the city staff when it comes to planning events.
That's sort of like what I was. Trying to indicate in the beginning that. After we approved this board. Six years ago or whatever. Then we didn't hear anything else. And we didn't hear anything, but. We didn't communicate with them either. We didn't give them any direction. We never had this conversation. So, you know. Uh, when I hear things like education. I haven't heard any of these programs. So it, it is, it's just a lack of communication and a lack of communication started. Six years ago or whatever, because when, after we passed it. That was it. We moved on to other things.
So what are we saying here? What, what's the end goal for you tonight? I, I. Can we put a pause on the H R C until we have a strategic plan? Should we put a? I don't know.
I, I, I would like to rewrite.
A pause until we rewrite.
I agree with. Professor Casper, but the ordinance. Doesn't provide, I've said this to lots of you. For a while, but I don't think the ordinance provides big guidance. Or doesn't give them business to do. And we meet and they try to think of productive things to do, but. Uh, planning commission doesn't meet unless. Somebody applies for a site plan approval, somebody applies for a zoning exception permit, or somebody wants the rezoning, or we're going to do a text amendment for the zoning. So that's the only reason they meet. Otherwise they're canceling me. Uh, and. There needs to be that kind of clear structure as to what the business of the H R C is. And then they can meet and they can meet productively and we can all. Uh, be on the same page. And maybe we need another pre-meeting that we. Invite or maybe a joint meeting even where we invite the H R C and talk about what that process would look like. Uh, in terms of, but, you know, I, I, I would agree that I think the ordinance should be rewritten to be clearer. And to get out of things that. You know, the investigative function, for example. Uh. You know, there's actually no teeth, right? And if you read through it and you read through the anti-discrimination ordinance. It's only with respect to those things where no other agency has support. All that stuff, that's pretty much not. We found out with the hotel, so they did investigate, but there was nothing that could be done about it because they don't, didn't have any enforcement. Power as it relates to that. So I think, yes, I think the ordinance could benefit. From rewrite. Think, uh, the, the H R C could benefit from hearing from the commissioners what your expectations are about. Communication in advance. Knowing if they're going to be the base of the community as it relates to these things, what are those things? And are they the things that are your commission? Are they the things that you, city commission, want them to be doing? Or not? And you, you know, and, and much of this, even as it's written today, contemplates you charging them with tasks. And then going out and doing it. That's not the way it's happening. Right now. We're trying to come up with productive things. To do without that guy.
And I think that, you know, I, I love the fact of how they're communicating with themselves right now. I think that's where we are leaps and bounds where we were. Eight, ten months ago, but I think that you just, you said, you said, Greg, it's purpose, right? Like, you know, what is? I think that's one of the issues they have with not being able to fill a board. It's like, I'm not coming and sitting here for two hours a month. Without knowing what we're doing. Like, you know, I have better things I could be doing. What is, what is the agenda? What are you trying to task? What are you trying to accomplish? And, and. And I think that's one of the main reasons why they have trouble fill, because they never had a full board, except for the first time. You know, people resign. You know, people resign. And so I think that people had a clear purpose on while they're, why they are coming to the meetings when they're on HRC. I think that's gonna that will incentivize people to be more engaged, right? Instead of sitting, I mean, cause again, we have, you know, short meetings and, and, and I'm okay with that. Your public input, go home, right? Do the city's business, go home. I, you know, if it's ten-minute meeting, great. If it's an hour meeting, hour happy, great, right? But I gotta have a purpose for me to sit out there and not die, it's cause I have other things I could be doing.
So I think a pre-meeting with the two groups is something that we probably should have done six or seven years ago.
And I think too, honestly, I, I, the last absolute thing I wanna see is a pause on them because like Commissioner Halt said, that was the best meeting um, for communication amongst the members and coming together and, and working together and trying to learn about each other in the backgrounds and trying to work towards the, the, you know, the mission and, and trying to, and looking at everything and, and now trying to move forward. And I, I think that progress is there now and it was, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know how else to explain it, but it was just a very good meeting of finally work, you know, really working together. And I honestly think that some of this comes from, if we were to sit in here and Commissioner Miller says, well, I think this is what the community wants. Commissioner Strauss says, I think this is what the community wants. I can say that, this is what I think community wants, because public comes to us all the time, constantly. So we know what the community wants, even before doing a survey. I bet you a lot of the things when we do this survey for us for strategic planning, we're gonna be like, well, we already knew this because they come to us a lot. They don't necessarily, it's, it's, it's not the same when it comes to the public reaching out to HRC. Okay? And so I think one of the absolute best tools that got suggested by maybe Commissioner Kasper, I'm not sure who, um, is doing that, that survey. So that it gives that clear parameter of this is what the public is asking for so that the HRC can really work off of that as opposed to this is what I think they want. Because, I mean, we can all think that we know what the public wants and even us, who the public comes to all the time, we can think we know what they want. And maybe a survey would tell us something different, but especially to give that direction because it's just trying to, to be there for the community, to help the community, that, the, the intention and the right um, that, that right intention is there. It's just how to do that because the public's not necessarily always reaching out to those members like they do us. But you know, I just think that survey would really give that, you know, if there could be a, some kind of a public survey to really help guide, okay, so now the next six months, this is what the public's asking for, so this is how we're gonna plan out. And then, you know, I don't know, you do it again or you do it yearly. I mean, I honestly, cause the needs change and, you know, and did, did the HRC respond back when writing and all of that was happening? We did bridging the divide because there was a lot of tension going on. That was an immediate response. Things like that are sometimes gonna happen. But um, you know, like that can't be planned out because you can't foresee that that's gonna happen. And that's where they really came together and saw that community need and the community was coming. But you know, they don't, we don't always know um, what the community is wanting and needing.
Without a survey or without knowing what the community wants and, and the potential of doing this, how have you hold an HRC meeting with, you know?
Going off of the
Because we don't have, have, we, we, we agree that this, well, I shouldn't say we agree. We, I believe, I believe that this needs to be amended. And, and I believe that we need to put out a survey and create a strategic plan, but without that, how do they hold meetings? Out guidance or purpose? That they need guidance and purpose to do that. And without moving that, without getting, helping get that plan and that information from the community, what is the purpose? That discussion or that infighting where there's, there's not the
I, I feel that they could really benefit from a discussion with, with us together.
I agree.
Quickly, immediately. If they are at a point where they are doing better than they've ever done before, this is exactly the time where they're going to welcome this kind of discussion, I believe. So then, then it's a springboard to the next, what are we gonna do next? But I, I wouldn't do a survey. I would get them to go talk.
Maybe we put a pause on any events that we want to plan. Until we know what those events, events should be, do they fall within the HRC's purpose? Do we have funding? Do we have staffing? All of that? So we get, we get our ducks in a row first. Are we all on the same page with what their purpose is? And then when we, I say we, I mean, us and their board. And then we rewrite the ordinance to essentially match what we believe the HRC can and should be doing. Doesn't mean that they can't meet. I, well, I don't know that they can still have a purpose in meeting. I'm not sure about that. Um, but it, it is bothersome to me to hear that there are four events happening that I don't know about as a city commissioner.
Well, one of them is for them, it's a diversity and equity inclusion training. That has to still be an open meeting because the forum will be there. But that's for them. That is coming up. So you necessarily might not know that one just because of that. That's the soonest one.
And, and I don't know that I need to have approval, but at least we need to be on the same page. We need to be, we need to know about them. I don't know. Yeah, the communication needs.
And like the planning commission, if something wants to get a rezoning, planning commission talks about it, votes on it, then we always know because we are ultimately decision-makers on, on that process. So it gets kicked to us, we make the decision and go forward. So this should be no different than any other board, is that if you wanna do something in the community, you need to have, you know, the chair needs to talk to the administrator, the administrator needs to bring it to us in a pre-meeting, said this is what the Human Relations Commission wants to do. What do you guys think? You wanna get behind it? Well, I do wanna get behind, um, example, I do wanna get behind it, but why are they looking at it like this? Or, or this way is cheaper or, or that way is cheaper. So more people at the table, you can get, you know, better brainstorming power. And, you know, I'll go back to what Kelly said. I think she's a hundred percent correctly. It's like, there's gotta be a reason to meet. You know, we got staff here that are, you know, that are conducting the meetings and, 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 and I, I'll go back and say I was really impressed with the last meeting. I, I, I emailed the, I texted a couple of members about it. I, I said, this is the most productive meeting I have seen, but still, when I sit there and watch the meeting and there's a half an hour discussion about a secretary position, a position, that's a problem, right? Like we, they need to be more organized, right? And I'm just gonna be honest, they need, they need clear direction from the city commission. And you know, and the communication piece has to go to Greg from the chair. That, that's what I would recommend. It just cuts out a lot of the nonsense and, and then they build consensus on what they wanna do. Talk to the chair, the chair kicks to Greg, Greg kicks to us. And then we don't have to, like I said, like Mayor said, we don't have to say yes or no, but we need to know what's going on. And I, I do watch the meetings, I watch all the meetings, but some, we're all busy. We, we all don't watch all the meetings. So we need to be brought to speed.
So do we wanna hold a special meeting? Um, have it at a pre-meeting? Have it at, how, how do you wanna, we want to meet? I think a pre-meeting.
Yeah, but if Greg thinks that he has a couple of things, he wants to break them, he kick it back a half an hour to five, and then Greg thinks that he's, all right, well, we gotta, we gotta talk about these two items before the super city business and then push it back half an hour, then we can roll right into that. So get the business done first and then work with our, our colleagues on the HRC, so.
And we wanna do that before looking at amending uh, ordinance?
I think that's a piece of it. I mean, that should be a piece of it, a hundred percent, yes. It's just my personal, individual thing.
Well, I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to lay out the process. Channeling my inner mood here, you know, he had a whole process of how things would follow, would flow. And I'm, I'm just not, I'm not real clear on what are, we've talked a lot tonight. Greg, do you understand what we want you to do? Because I don't understand what we want you to do. Let's put it that way.
Well, it's clear enough that you'd like to invite the HRC here for a pre-meeting, hopefully the next pre-meeting, but there's something to everybody. Uh, to have sort of an ultimate discussion about your priorities, what you think they should be focused on. Look at a process. You know, finding their focus going forward that um, you know, will allow you to dig into the order. You know, maybe it's a subcommittee that gets appointed, some of the members will be city commissioners, some of them will be HRC that can work on. You know, refining the ordinance that would make more sense and make it more productive. Purpose. We can talk at that meeting about, it was a survey that comes out in advance and out. And should they be scheduling some people to plan and, and advance about as well. Yeah, I don't know, but that will, you know, it's kind, it's kind of, aren't personal the same thing because the ordinance should be their basic mission statement and uh, all, you know, so. Seems like that, I, I, I'm clear enough that you all wanna get, you wanna get together with them.
Wanna sit at a table and have an hour-long discussion without a plan at the end?
Yes.
That's what I don't want to happen. But I also wanna plan at the end of that.
Yeah, like at the end of that meeting, we're going to, our goal is to rework the Um, we're going to rework this, the, and I really firmly believe that we should put a hold on any HRC events until we have a plan for them and it falls within the ordinance. It's my opinion. Guys don't have to agree for like it, but I, if we're not happy with what we told them to do, what should they be doing?
I agree with that.
Hundred percent.
And it stinks.
I think, I think, but we're, we got conversing with some of the HRC members, they're frustrated with lack of direction, lack of a strategic plan. They're frustrated. And so I, I think there's, there's no purpose in continuing to meet like, on their next meeting and our meeting, that's a great time to meet together and come and have some conversation to look at what amending this looks like, how are we going to move forward in the community? I don't, I don't see a purpose of meeting until, that can be the next meeting, right? Where we come together. And I don't see a purpose of meeting until then.
And I think that if we got, you know, I, I agree with three of you. I think that it, it's probably prudent for us to do that, I think, but also I think that, you know, I've been asked to be on a lot of boards. I'm on one board, a city commission, that's it. I don't, I don't like to go to meetings, let's have a purpose and, and I know some, some probably do, but unless, until we get this straightened out, I think that what's the purpose by having our executive assistants sit to our meeting with no substance per se?
Well, the, the current ordinance says they meet quarterly.
They, they must be doing.
They must meet at least is what it says, nope.
So we just had one last week, so we do ask them to go quarterly. Like the current ordinance says. What do you think of that? True, I mean, but other than that, but that's, that's not, that is a meeting. Not, but when they're not conducting HRC business because
And at that time, we can explain to their whole membership.
I think it can be a very proactive, very upbeat and very um, forward um, meeting that can be strong with all the organizational suggestions, the communication suggestions, all those things that, that will only make that better. You know, I just, I just can't see a downside. It all has to be an upbeat, professional and polite. Uh, but hard-hitting hour or half an hour or forty minutes, whatever it is. I think it's, I think there's a need to do that first.
So what's our plan? Going next meet, next meet.
Well, we're gonna invite familiar next pre-meeting.
And then we're gonna
Sort of discussion.
I think we have some end goals is to rework this, give them a better vision for what we want to see out of them. And communication and if they do want to do events, what is the proper process for that?
I get where you're going with asking him like, do you have direction? Because I, I get that. Cause I was in the same way you are, like, what's our end goal tonight? But I'm glad we have a plan now and, cause that, that board with support can only do great things, but we need to, again, support them getting on the right track and understanding what the purpose is, you know?
Cause I love the human traffic.
For sure.
Uh, event, I mean, I didn't love it, that's. Yeah, I am struggling. This is a really long one. But that was a great event, I thought, and well, well worth the time. Um, we're gonna need time for a public comment due to time and do we want to table the church street lot discussion until?
Well, it's pre-meeting, so I won't be able to table it as such, but you know, we'll try to get it back on uh,
Okay.
When, and compete here. I mean, so you can think about it, like in rationale is that there's no real driveway access to the back of that lot from the east side. The east, east side of a property, so he's hoping to get a driveway on the west side as well. That would allow for access to the potentially parking area in the back behind the house. You know, and think about uh, what you think uh, their price uh, that would be in one of uh, other sales that we've done in the area. Do you own two other lots further down the street to the east?
He just walked in, by the way. I think he thought it was maybe on the He can talk about it on the comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's to look at, um, but thank you, bye. A lot of time.
All right. At this time, we will begin public comment inside the city chambers. And then we will open it up to Zoom participants after that. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Actually, I'm also frank, I'm a city leader and president. I just checked my heart rate and it's one oh nine. So I'm going to try. That just gives you an idea of how much I am reading myself in right now. Um, the discussion about the HRC. I'm discussing. I was on the HRC for two years. We asked for guidance. We asked for help. We asked for strategic planning. We asked you guys to come to our meetings. Mayor is the only one there and it's her job obligation to be there. We asked for all of these things. So now when we're floundering and flailing, that's all. That's not fair. To a group of unpaid minority volunteer commission. Be expected to know how to run when they've never been taught how to run. That's not fair. You guys know that we have reached out and we reach out in multiple. Because if one voice, it's really easy for y'all to ignore one voice. So if we get ignored by one, we're gonna, the rest of us are gonna send out to anyone that will answer a email. Like, that's how it works. We were desperate. We, we were desperate for a long time. I've been going to the HRC commission as a fangirl since it started and Chuck started. When my best friend Devon Vice was on, I was at those meetings. And then I finally decided to join in twenty twenty. And I left not because the people that are running the HRC, I left because of what you guys are talking about in this room. And the attitude that I hear in this room. I'm not comfortable with a group of white and white presenting people reworking the Human Relations Commission ordinance without the Human Relations Commission involved. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, no one in charge should be comfortable with that. You guys can make a strategic plan to rework that ordinance, but you have yet to talk about the hate. Symbol ordinance that the HRC brought to you. I have not heard a peep about that, other than Deta. The lack of people sitting on those seats is not because the commission doesn't do anything, or doesn't have any focus, or doesn't have any plans. It's because of the people in this group. It's because they know that if they go there, they're going to be flying against the window over and over and over again, and that's why I quit. Because it's a lot easier to come in here and bother you in here than expect you to do something. With the commission that's supposed to be on part with you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. Uh, Andrea Benard. I agree with most everything that you all have said. Especially updating the ordinance. But you forgot about the bylaws, so bylaws require that we meet twelve times a year. We don't meet in December because it doesn't make sense to me. And we voted not to do it because it's a holiday time. We wanted to change and have less meetings because we don't need me twelve times a year or eleven times. We don't have enough, um, programs or ideas to come forward. But I do want to say, I've been disappointed by. The things that you all are saying tonight, I've been trying to raise my hand and act crazy back here, I know you felt it, I know you heard it. Uh, and you saw it. But part of it is, you all don't know, and I have been on the HRC before. But we've had five chairpersons. In five years. And some of them did not stay, not even a year, because I've been chair for two years. Remember a lot changed when the pandemic. We had to stop our programming, we had a lot of programming set up with the chief. We tried to get, um, the fire department to come and talk to us and give people information. About what they should be doing during this pandemic. We tried to get the city county, uh, health department. To come and explain to people while we were on Zoom, to try to help them in what's happening to their lives. Another thing is, we are not finished from dealing with the COVID. And so people are cautious about coming to our meeting. They don't mind being on Zoom, but if you look at your Zoom and you come and look at our Zoom, we may have two people on Zoom. Our programming that we have set up were ideas that came up at our last meeting. It wasn't a matter of fact, because I received emails from some of my commissioners at the HRC. Even the last two days. And it's about the programming has to be changed. I text the chief today to let him know, everything is on hold. Until we find out what the city commission wants. I will, I will always go to the city administrator. Of the mayor and the city administrator on any idea that comes.
You can talk in the next one.
I'm done.
I'm looking, uh, you've heard me numerous times that I'm down south winter on that fun dress. So first of all, I do want to reiterate, and Gullulish should know this, our bylaws say. Over here, regularly have to have eleven. And yeah, we have been in discussion with us, but what are we supposed to do? Just not follow the bylaws? We only have so many options, so we've done as we've been told by what little information has been given to us. I've been on the HRC for around four years now. And I can assure you, every single one of those years, we were asking different commissioners and the commissioner as a whole to come talk to us, come give us some attention. And give us some guidance, give us some idea, then, well, here we are now, it's taking extended time and. We still haven't recovered from the last time that we were ignored and then shut down and then told. Yeah, you can come back, we're only going to give you half guidance, you can come back. So we've been done during this whole time, it would be nice if we actually like given a fair chance and treated. With similar respect to literally any other commission you guys look over. Again, I'm pretty sure the planning commission were hounding you for twelve months to come to a meeting, somebody would break down and come to a meeting. But that's not the same with the HRC, we've experienced that. And I have reached out to numerous people about programming ideas both inside and outside the HRC. But, uh. We don't get much reach out back either, both from commissioners or really in general. So it's put all on us when we have less resources than literally every other commission, that doesn't seem quite fair. And I have quite a bit more to say, but I think that gets across, and I do of course, talking to numerous of you in your future.
At this time, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. You will hear the alarm go off, there is a three minute time limit and please state your name and address.
Robert Banky, two five six Ironwood.
Two five six Ironwood.
Uh, first of all, I appreciate commissioners, uh, the conversation tonight associated with, uh, strategic planning, I know that's something that. Uh, Commissioner Halt and Commissioner Castleberry have been coming to our meetings, um, the last couple of months, uh, as we've gone through this, so. As, um, the strategic planning begins with, uh, the city, if you can, um. Keep us in mind, uh, through that process, that would be appreciative, um, I want to, uh, stress that, uh. Um, Commissioner Ramos has a, uh, rock solid, uh, program on, uh, home purchasing that's been done in the past, that's. Being presented by Premier Bank, so our loan, our own local organization and local experts. Which, um, I think is an important piece, uh, giving the housing prices and I would appreciate if that could, uh, move forward. The presentation that I had with the book study, um, I was able to get the author. To come and zoom to us, um, and do that book study, um, but those dates he seems to be flexible with. Um, so we, uh, can move that forward into a different, uh, event, uh, time as well into the, the future if need be, um. And then most importantly, I think, uh, at the next meeting as, uh, we move forward, getting that feedback and then. Uh, creating those questions for community survey, uh, for us to jump on that and begin to start asking those questions. Based on our joint meeting, which, uh, I would hope would take place after April twenty fifth when I return.
Uh, Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. A couple of comments, um. Although the sound system has been improved in that room, it's still not the best and I would encourage you to figure out ways to get people to either talk up. Or enhance their speech somehow, that's for us older people with hearing problems. Um, and maybe you might want to find a time to make sure you stop, so you have enough time for public comment. Uh, I know you're running into the next meeting, that's always an issue, but that would be appreciated, so on to your strategic planning. One of you said, or maybe two of you said that you know the community, I challenge you, I don't think you do. I don't think you've had enough sessions with people on the east side, west side, south or north to actually find out what they are actually thinking. The survey is, public sessions is another, so I encourage you to do that. Public input is extremely important in this whole strategic, strategic planning process. I was involved two times ago when the public was involved, I think it was. I mean, I heard Lad Strayer say it was the best, but you know what, you've got to make the best of you can and then carry it forward, so. Couple of things, have you considered Michigan Municipal League recommendations for your consultant for this work? I have a sense that we don't really have a strong relationship with MML and that troubles me. And also, did you do an RFP to, uh, seek out this particular consultant for this? Thank you.
Ten Tokars, one ten South Locust, I want to congratulate you on your strategic ambush. Over the HRC, it's not what I originally called in to talk about, um. I think it was strategic in that you allowed enough time, you didn't include it on the agenda, and if you had any plans on suspending the HRC. It should have been transparent and in the paper, not something added to the agenda at the last minute. I think the city administrator mentioned that one of the things that the HRC could do is add something last minute. But he did the same thing tonight, and I think that's shameful of all of you. My initial call is in regards to Riverview Terrace, buildings do not just all of a sudden detach from the structure. Um, I have contacted the Mishda and Mishda approved. A six point five million dollar grant to repair that building, it's a six point five million dollar grant that the owner doesn't have to pay. And they did not have any requirement when they approved it on February sixteenth for you to approve a pilot. So I think you're getting told something different on there and I think you need to revisit that. The other part is, there have been over six hundred inspections there, and I think that you owe it to the people of the city of Adrian. To contact the residents and go through the inspections and confirm. That nobody has ever made any complaints about this breaks in the floors or the ceilings in the past. Before you guys approve a pilot, a pilot, I think it's shameful on the part of the Adrian City Commission to even consider this at this point in time.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Me, uh, all in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin the meeting out there at. Seven. Sorry, I thought you already were. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April third, two thousand and twenty-three, if everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss is at.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Gauss?
Move the excuse Commissioner Gauss.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Castleberry, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The motion to excuse Commissioner Gross is approved by an all yes vote.
At this time, I'm going to ask Ben Negron to come forward and he's going to be presented with a proclamation this evening.
Hello, sir. Whereas Ben Negron has been awarded the two thousand twenty-two Fred Meyer Award, the highest level recognition a Meyer team member can receive. And whereas the award is presented annually to an individual who embodies the values and missions set forth. By company founder Fred Meyer, including leadership based in humility, generosity, and a passion for serving others. And whereas Ben has been with Meyer for twenty-one years and has been an invaluable member of the Adrian community for over forty years. And whereas Ben serves the Adrian community on the Siena Heights University Board of Trustees. As well as the Lenoirway Community Foundation Board of Directors, receiving the Lenoirway Leadership Award in two thousand twenty-one. For exemplifying the quality of leadership that will determine the future of Lenoirway County. And whereas Ben founded and served as the Director of Hispanics of Lenoirway Alliance and remains active in many Hispanic community events. And whereas the dedication and commitment that Ben has shown in his role at Meyer and in the Adrian community is to be commended. Now therefore I, Angela Sorketh, Mayor of the City of Adrian, to hereby congratulate Ben Negron on receipt of the Fred Meyer Award from Meyer. And encourage members of our community to follow Ben's example of service. Congratulations, want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, just want to take a moment to. Uh, first of all, thank, uh, our honorable mayor and our, uh, honorable esteemed, uh, commissioners. Uh, for taking the opportunity to recognize, uh, things that happened, uh, with public, uh, individuals. Uh, last time I was here, I saw a young man recognized for his swimming efforts, I think that says something about the city of Adrian, don't you? The things that we place as importance, uh, my first thanks go to the team. The Meyer team is an incredibly hardworking group of people, there are two hundred and seventy-nine strong team members and team leaders at the Aiden Meyer. Many of which have been there for forty years. And I also want to thank our, uh, incredible loyal customers. Without both, I wouldn't be able to be here today to, uh, receive this recognition, so. Uh, I also want to take a moment to thank Connie, my beautiful wife, thirty-eight years, who saved me from, you know, a lot of bad things. Most of us can probably. Understand that, so thank you again very much, very humbling, uh, deeply appreciative. And, uh, spurs me to continue to do more on behalf of our, uh, beautiful community, thank you.
And, and it is Meyer, not Myers, just, you know, whenever, Ben has instilled that in my brain, so I always correct people, just so you know. I always say it's Meyer, it's not Myers, yeah, so, yes.
Moving on to our consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
I'm so sorry, my mic was.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Strayer, roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda under ordinances, we have ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero three. It is a first reading and adoption of an amendment to section eighty-two point three three. Of chapter eighty-two of the Adrian City Code, Riverview Terrace Housing Development, this is a first reading only. Moving on to resolutions, resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero nine is from engineering. It is a resolution to approve, quote, for electrical work at the farmer's market, farmer's market pavilion, may I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move the adopted resolution, support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for public comment, we will begin inside the city chambers first and then we will open it up to Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit which you will see on the screen and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the chambers at this time.
Ashley Cavasso Frank, City.
Ashley Cavasso's Frank, City of Adrian resident. I have recovered. Thank you. Um, so I'm going to stick to the script this time. I have lots of stuff that was written down that I didn't get to. Um. The attendance of the HRC events is low, but we're also not promoted through the city Facebook the same way First Fridays and the fun events. Our events are not always fun because the topics or our events were not always fun because the topics are hard. Right? People don't want to have conversations about homelessness, human trafficking, discrimination, uh, police violence. Those are hard conversations to have. You have to really push and convince people why they should attend, why it's important. And the HRC needs the city to help push that, to help promote that, to put it on the Facebook page. Maybe the HRC should have their own Facebook page. Maybe that can be as part of that part of your strategic planning. That way, it doesn't get lost in the shuffle with trash pickup and stuff like that, because the people that are watching for that might be different than the people that would be looking for HRC events. Or that that's another thing, that the people that come to the HRC commissioners are different than the people that come and talk to you. I think I heard one of you bring that up. I think that might have been Commissioner Miller, that the people that feel comfortable talking to to the people in these chairs are different than the people that are comfortable talking to Lady Bernard or D'Angelo or Waken. It's a different audience. So you're going to get different input. I believe that you both know city needs. But I think you guys could hear different voices and in different ways. And I think that's an important perspective to consider when you're you're talking about the HRC and their effectiveness and who their audience is. Um, it should be the same audience, really. It's also really reductive to compare the Human Relations Commission to the Planning Commission. Those are two completely different purposes. You're talking about discrimination and human lives and and comparing it to zoning ordinances. That's insulting, really, if you think about it. Those are two completely different purposes and missions. And they're not gonna, they're gonna have different needs. You're gonna need more meetings for HRC because humans need more meetings. The human condition and and community needs more meetings than property.
Hi, I'm Scott Belts with Medallion Management. Was going to address some of the concerns that was maybe on the phone regarding the Riverview Terrace Building. Appreciate everybody's time tonight. You know, this happened almost, well, it happened in July of last year, so it's been a long year. And it's almost been going on a year. And there's nobody in this room that didn't want this to happen, I'm sure, any more than myself. It's something that happened. We didn't try to hide it. We didn't shy away from it. As far as the inspections go, gentleman brought up the inspections. Uh, the property was inspected annually by Mishda. The only way to catch the problem, honestly, was to tear back the carpet in each unit, which isn't really feasible to do. Uh, when I was the one personally that got the email from the staff that said, um, they took a picture of it and sent it to me and said they're concerned about it. I sent it to a structural engineer and it just kind of snowballed from there. You know, we didn't, again, we didn't try to hide it. We didn't try to cover it up. Uh, have the cracks been there for a long time? Yep, they have been. Probably a lot longer than 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 I've been with Medallion. I've been with them for twenty-five years, twenty-eight years. But I would not have felt right not doing something about it. God forbid the building fall on a hundred and sixty-three people. We would all be having more problems than we do right now. So. I didn't do the popular thing. I think I did the right thing. And what we're asking for the city is through this, um, through the grant, we basically are capped at fifty percent of the rents. Um, so our income is somewhat capped. And that's why we're asking for participation from the city to help with that. I mean, there's no reason in fixing the building if at the end of it, I can't operate it. So that's honestly, I mean, I would welcome any any discussion or anything, any debate. Again, we're not trying to hide anything or we're we're being as transparent as possible. You know, I'm the one on probably on Facebook, everybody has seen my name, not in a positive way, but hopefully at the end of this, we can have an open house and everybody can come there and know that the building is safe to move back into. And that is honestly, a hundred percent our goal here. So, thank you.
Good evening again, Andrea Bernard, HRC Chair and a city resident. I just wanted to thank the commission for considering to have a joint session with the HRC. And I think we will be able to bring a better understanding of the direction that we're coming from and also what your desires are for us. I did want to clear up a couple of things that you all were mentioning. And one of them is we have not used any funds, but for one event that we had in October, which was a hundred and eighty dollars for the food that we had to pay for. There are no events that we've had in the last few years that that we've had to use our funds for. So our funds are basically uh, turnover from the year before. So I wanted you all to know that. Also, the bylaws, I would like to make sure that you get a updated copy of what we are trying to present to you on the bylaws so that you can see some of the reasons why we've been doing some things uh in meeting and trying to put some things together. Uh, our vice chair, uh, Waken has been working, he's the head of our committee for the bylaws. I am on that committee and so is Commissioner Binky. So we have put together some ideas. We would like to have your input as much as possible, so we will send that to you all, so you have a chance to look it over and see some of the things that we must do. I also wanted you all to know that we have used all the agencies that we can uh, in the community to help give us resources to our community and our constituents so that they know how to deal with stress, homelessness, um, people that are having difficulty with um, all kinds of things, especially those that are walking our streets and are homeless. We have done, uh, I would like you all to consider uh, allowing us to do the training for the homeowners because the bank is involved in that. And that's something that we've done for the last three to four years. Uh, we stopped doing it in during the pandemic time, so that's why it was only three times. So I want you all to consider that and we can send you the information about it so that you know exactly what it's about and you can approve it or not approve it. But we were trying to do it during the springtime, so people have a chance to get any business together because they know the information. So that is one thing. And also bridging the divide is something that we were planning to do before the summertime because of some of the uh, events that have been happening in our community. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Waken Ramos. Uh, I just want to uh, add some specificity specificity to the homeownership seminar. We've done that for years. It's literally the program that got me housed. You know, not that long ago, I was running and becoming here and I wouldn't even know if I even got to get a shower that week because I was homeless. I'd be walking up and down these streets with snow up to my knees. And this is literally the program that got me housed. So of course, I am a huge advocate to getting out to as many people as possible because it's important to get people housed. And I assure you, I uh, don't work at a bank or anything. I don't have a particular job and it got me housed. So this is an extreme porn program and I will continue to rave about how great it is for as long as I can, but it is a program Larry designed to get people into houses and to help them get things on so they can. Generally, the best time to have these are in the spring, so that people have time to look at houses and to hopefully get moved in or at least get through the progress process. As I assure you, it sucks moving in the winter. Hey, it sucks moving at any time. But imagine you gotta carry your stuff, stuff that you're afraid of breaking, and you gotta go through a foot of snow. And oh, well, if you don't do it this day, well, you're gonna have to help the next day, et cetera. So again, there's reasons for why it's leaned towards spring and earlier in the year. And man, I will continue to tell you how amazing it is. Thank you.
Good evening, Ben Negron, one fifty-nine North Madison Street here in Adrian. Two things. Number one, I'd like to uh, extend a sincere thank you to our police chief. I know the poll is separating us here, Vince. I received uh, an email from Vince shortly after the last time that I was here and asked the uh, commission to consider uh, an opportunity to go out over to the east side and take a look at the lights that are out. And uh, he did that. Now, I had not thought that the police chief would take that on. I thought maybe that's something city engineering or, you know, one of those departments would do that. Any partnered up with them. And uh, today I received an email from him showing uh, what that inventory looks like. I can tell you that I I uh, you know, I'm extraordinarily thankful for that. Uh, I feel like now others know how many lights are out and I challenged the the team to find out if maybe, you know, not just the east side, but other parts of the City of Adrian as well. Winter Street, for example, across from Meyer, has four lights that are burnt out. And I just noticed as I was driving in here, there are three lights out at the start of downtown Adrian. And so the point is that, you know, as we look at how do we fight blight, right? How do we fight the issues that affect us and crime? The first thing is to shine a light, right? Shine a light, get the information, but also light it up so that people don't feel too comfortable doing the kinds of things that's been happening to us over on the east side. And so again, uh, Vince Emrick, my sincere thanks for the efforts. I appreciate it very much. Big surprise, but I think it speaks to those kinds of efforts that are coming out of this commission and the city and the government in the last several months. So I appreciate that. The second is an apology. I did not know I had to be in that meeting earlier today. So I have a minute to tell you. Um, so two thirty-four uh, West Church was where Connie and I uh, right out of uh, high school, got married and decided that we wanted to make a life together in nineteen eighty-five. The first place we lived was in the upstairs apartment of the first Apostolic Church here in the City of Adrian for Hispanics. My parents, uh, dear friends, uh, with uh, Lady Bernard and Bishop Bernard, who I consider to be my parents as well. Um, and they now have a church over on Frank Street. We used to have parking space there when I lived there, right in front of the building. And over the years, as that road has been changed, there is no parking there. And so the tenants that we have there now upstairs and downstairs have nowhere to park. They have to park over by Steve Rosales's properties that he they purchased. So I ask that you consider uh, the sale of the property right next to it. Um, and uh, appreciate any consideration to help get those tenants a place to park. Thank you very much.
Terry Collins, Levin Scott Coroner, Michigan. I just want to polish Ben's apple a little bit more. I've known Ben Negron for quite some time and a couple hundred years ago, when I was police chief, I sponsored a golf tournament in Adrian called the Cops and Robbers. And obviously, the cops are the good people, the robbers are the merchants. And uh, we would go to various merchants and ask for some things. I went to Ben early on. And so I'd like to have a little goodies bag, but there's several participants. We would have upwards of eighty, ninety participants. I said, I'd like to have a sleeve of golf balls. We could put in this. Benson, you go take what you want. Whatever you want, go back and get it. And he happened to stop by the first time. And you want to be a little bit, I guess, congenial with it. I was grabbing some pretty inexpensive balls. He reached over to some top lights that were a few bucks and said, you take these. These are the ones you want for those people. And again, a few weeks back, I'm out at Meyer looking for uh, some legal pads. As one of your commissioners may know, I'm fond of telling anybody, if it isn't written down, it didn't happen. And I consume legal pads in large quantities. Well, they happened to be out that time I went there. Ben came out, Ben came out, saw me standing there. What are you doing? I'm looking for legal pads. Just a minute. He went back and stole one off somebody else's desk and bought it out and gave it to me. But that's the kind of man Ben is.
Judith Hamerly, Adrian, Michigan. Um, eleven eighty-three Glendale, Adrian, Michigan. Uh, we're all interested in government transparency and I have breaking news for you. County Commission only meets during the day, which I think is a real mistake. They meet once a month uh, during the day. So I spoke to my commissioner, Mr. Collins, about seeing what could be done to change that. And he said that he has spoken to Mr. Van Doran and also intimated that the more people who spoke to the commissioners about this and the urgency of having, which they can, a second meeting every month at night, the more likely it is to happen. So you know the people on the county commission? If you don't, you can look it up. All their phone numbers and email addresses are there. All of us can do that so people could actually go to those commission meetings. Thank you.
At this time, we will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. You will see the time limit on your screen and please remember to state your name and address. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? I would, um, it must be like praise Vince Emrick night, I guess. Um, I would like to um, also uh, just say my personal thanks. Um, I had a citizen reach out concerned about something. I went straight to our city administrator, Greg Elliott, and he answered it, but he goes, but this does involve Vincent. He wants to call you and he's on vacation. And I said, no, no, please. And he still called me on vacation and I didn't want that. I wanted him to enjoy his vacation, but uh, that's just the kind of of police chief that he is and he cares about this community to that degree that he took that time out um, to um, call me that evening so that he could explain it further so that I could take that information back to that citizen. So um, I am very grateful and thankful that we have a police chief that cares that much about our community. So thank you. Go ahead.
I mean to go last, mayor, but um, no, I I just want to congratulate Ben Negron again. Um, you know, I didn't, I knew who Ben was before uh, he started coming to meetings. I I see him flying around Meyer. And and you know, you know, the guy, he was strictly business, but more so was that, you know, going to breakfast, breaking bread with somebody. That fixes a lot of issues. That clears a lot of things up. And once you start sharing ideas and connecting citizens with the proper city staff to find out how things operate, how things work. You know, Ben and I's relationship has has continued to flourish, working together for the betterment of the city. So. I'm not surprised he got that award, to be honest. He may be, but I'm not surprised by just getting to know him a little bit better over the last few months, but uh, he's a smart guy, um, you know, who has integrity. And 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 uh, I'm I'm very blessed to got to give you, you know, consider him a friend now. And and we have a lot of work to do, but uh, I think with a lot of community partners, we can continue to get on the right path. But uh, congratulations again, my friend, and uh, well deserved.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.